Good evening. This is Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. The ugly man t-shirt you decided to wear tonight or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and will wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that the members of the Planning Board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Excellent. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:37 PM Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the general public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after their concluding remarks. I'll invite each board member by name to provide comments, questions, penetrating insights, and all emotions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members, please remember, and speakers, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you are not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you're yielded before, state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. Excellent. At this point, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote to accept our minutes from last meeting. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford.
I have a slight point of order.
Sure.
I think that Carolyn should abstain because I don't think she was here.
However, I thought about that, Thomas. However, the minutes were published and she had a chance to review and read them.
Okay, no, I mean, I was actually more being puckish about that than anything. I don't feel strongly about it, but.
No, no, but I did think about that.
And I did read them, so.
I'm gonna allow it.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
And I voted in the affirmative, so the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other business that we need to, or mail that we need to address at this time?
Well, I checked the mailbox today.
Excellent.
There's a lot of stuff there. I discovered, for example, that Bolton has a tree warden. Do we have a tree warden?
We do.
We do?
And a viewer of fences.
Yes, someone wanted to remove 30 feet of stone wall, 148-inch white pine, and 25 oak trees.
Is it on a scenic road? Because.
Yeah.
In Bolton?
In Bolton? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, yeah, okay.
So it was just in a butter notification?
Yeah.
One of many, many. I don't know why everybody sends us all these great notifications every week, but we never send them any. We should work on that.
Are you looking to add to your job as clerk?
I think it's rather, I think it may be circumstantial. It seems to me to be rather rare that we do anything that abuts another town, but.
It's a good point well taken.
Anytime we have a public hearing, we send it to all the abutting towns.
Yeah.
Okay.
So public hearings of any sort that we hold, and that's basically what they're doing there. They're notifying you of a public hearing, probably.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
If they were of interest, I would present them to you, but in general, they're not. Except for this one from Marlboro. I would like to look at the staple. It's all paper. Technology we also don't have. So you know the MBTA multifamily housing overlay district thing?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I guess there's some MBTA run through their town. What is it?
So there, there are a tremendous number of towns in Eastern Mass that are MBTA communities because they either have rail or whatever that's MBTA driven, or they're a town adjacent to an MBTA community.
Oh, it's adjacent to?
Yeah, that's what catches them, yeah.
So legislation was passed that required all MBTA and accessory MBTA communities to develop zoning bylaws that created multifamily dwelling districts within a certain distance of those facilities. We're in the donut hole. So Hudson and Bolton and maybe Clinton and Boylston, I think. Um, there's a, there's a small number of us that are bounded on the north and the south and the east and the west by MBTA communities, but we don't have to comply as a result, so we got.
We've got adjacent communities between us.
Well, some of these communities have been fighting it, right? But Marlboro is apparently complying and they have.
Yeah, Milton has made a big, to fight it.
Milton and like Tuxbury or something, some North Shore town.
It says you have to create the language, but you're not, you're not required to produce the housing. You're just, you're supposed to provide for it to be acceptable. And that's.
To read this? Should I send this around?
Yep.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, that'd be interesting, yeah. I mean, it.
Especially if their zone is going to be anywhere near the Solomon Fun Mall.
Good point. Interesting point.
I suspect Marlboro may not even have any location that's close enough, and it is an adjacent community, so it, you know, it has to adhere to the zone a lot of change.
Does Northborough have an actual train stop?
Northborough? No.
Right.
Grafton, I think, would be.
Westborough.
Westborough and Grafton are the closest ones in that sort of stretch. It's the Boston to Worcester line.
Right. Framingham abuts Marlboro. So, and Framingham certainly.
And Framingham is on the, is on that line, yeah. Yeah.
Right. So, yeah, it would be interesting.
Marlboro is tangential to Framingham that has a station, so they have to.
Yeah, no, that's, that's right. They're an adjacent town, yep.
Yeah.
Um, and this, this operates very much the way the, um, accessory apartment does. You have to, you know, you have to create it. You have to create it as a use of right, et cetera. So structurally, it's very, very similar to the, um, accessory dwelling unit.
It gives very gracious rewards to the developers that want to put those facilities in too.
Yeah. Yep.
Hey, it's on its way to you guys.
Thank you, Jay.
That's all I have, though, I think.
Excellent. Then we're on time, because we have a A and R at 7:45.
Excellent. And that would be Chris Sonny?
I don't know who's going to be there.
Okay, so he's in the audience, but it is for the parcel that Jay sent stuff out for.
Correct.
It was a River Bridge, yes.
Correct. Could you promote him, please?
I am doing that now.
Excellent. Thank you. Hello, Chris.
Hi. Yeah, how are you? Good, thank you. How are all of you?
Good, thank you.
We're well.
Excellent.
Good.
Welcome.
I don't know if my brother Matt is in the waiting room. Um, we can proceed without him, but he did have the link and was going to join.
All right, so there is somebody in the audience that's on an iPhone, but there's no name, so I do not know.
Okay.
Why don't you try to promote him and see? Wouldn't he be calling in on his iPhone?
He could, he could. He usually uses his laptop, but I'm not sure.
Why don't you promote him and, you know, and see who it is?
Uh, Mr. Sanford, is that how you would like to handle that?
Ah, sure.
Okay. Person on the iPhone. Are you Matt Sonny?
I am.
All right.
All right.
All right, I'm gonna see. No, I can't change his name. Okay.
Okay, guys, what do you got for us? Do you want to walk us through it?
Sure. I don't know if you have the, um, the A and R plan that couldn't be put up on the screen.
We're going to in one minute.
You have it, Jay?
Yep, it's coming. Second. There we go.
Hope it's not a cat video, Jay.
First page. There's the second page. Here we are. You see that?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I can see it, yeah. Uh, so this is what's now known as Lot 9B at River Bridge. To the bottom of the sheet, you have the cafe and liquor store building. Uh, you can see where the roundabout in River Road West sits, uh, to the left. And then Basset Road comes in from the roundabout. And this parcel has not had any takers during the years we've been working on River Bridge. We've had a few possible uses, but nothing that has panned out. Uh, up at the top part of your sheet, you can see the, the little white building that, um, is not far from the daycare center. That is now vacant. It's been a residential, uh, building. And then, uh, in the middle, you see the old Reese Liquor Store. Um, and our goal is to divide Lot 9B as it presently exists, which is about 3.7 acres, into three parcels. The main purpose is to provide an area that would be parking for the cafe and liquor store building. And so we have created, out of the existing lot, which is Lot 8A, a slightly larger lot that extends northward. And there would be additional parking there for the cafe, should it ever become a restaurant or some other use that needs more parking. And then the remainder of, of what is Lot 9B today has Basset Road going through the middle of it, uh, sort of three quarters up the page. And the public safety departments don't want that ever closed. They want cars to be able to come in off of River Road West and go right through to the apartments. So it sort of forms a natural break in the remainder of Lot 9B. And it occurred to us that it would be helpful in marketing these if we created Lot 9D, which would have about two acres of land. That would be the one with the old liquor store. And Lot 9E, which would have about 1.3 acres of land, and it currently has the old residence building. Um, so we believe this meets the minimum road frontage requirement of the bylaw, which is actually for our overlay zone only 20 feet wide. And each of the three parcels has the required 20 feet. And so we're looking for the board's endorsement if they're comfortable with the way we would like to divide up, uh, Lot 9B.
Can, could you explain how the other dimensional requirements, if any, other than the, uh, the frontage is satisfied under this?
Well, we have a very flexible overlay zone, uh, which, uh, allows lots to be created with only 20 feet of road frontage. And the minimum area, I think, is, uh, is 20,000 square feet, which is also met by each of the three lots.
Okay, that was the question I was asking because I hadn't looked at that one in a while. Thank you.
Yep.
Jay, can you go down to the lot that has the cafe on it? So I assume Basset Road continues through that lot?
Yes, there would be no change to Basset Road. Uh, regardless of who owns the real estate under Basset Road, there is recorded on the land records a series of cross easements so that everyone on this side of the Road West associated with River Bridge is allowed to use these roads. And so it shouldn't make a difference that, um, presently, this section of Basset Road goes with Lot 9B. And if you endorse this plan, uh, that section of Basset Road would, would become part of the cafe lot since the apartments, uh, the daycare center and the cafe, uh, have this mutual cross easement recorded that, uh, everyone can use Basset Road.
And the sign that's currently there for the apartments, where is that located? Along there?
Just north of where it says Basset.
So that would be on the largest of the three lots?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Uh, may I put a motion on the floor, which of course doesn't, uh, foreclose further, uh, discussion?
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve this subdivision as A and R as it meets all applicable uh, dimensional requirements for the overlay zone.
Can we have a little bit more meat around that, Thomas? Can we reference a plan and, uh, dates and stuff?
Uh, yeah, the, well, I said the A and R plan, um, presented to the board. We can fill in the details. I.
Okay, so dated 12, uh, 9/21/20?
Yes, sorry, I'm looking at this on an iPhone and so it's very tiny for me. Apologies.
It's 9/21/23, I think, is what that says, right?
It's 23, is that right, Chris?
Yes, it's right.
And it creates Lots 9C, D, and E?
Yes.
So you're hoping to make these lots more marketable by making them smaller?
Well, again, the purpose for, of Lot 9C is to make sure the cafe building will always have enough parking. And, and with the remainder of the land, it seems to us that, um, breaking the lots at, uh, Basset Road makes sense. And we do have conversations with folks who would be interested in uh, buying from us and putting a commercial building on just Lot 9E or on just Lot 9D. So, uh, it would probably be helpful to us if we could direct potential buyers to the Town's assessors map and that that map would show that each of these is an individual parcel.
Yep. Uh, sorry, apologies. May I ask if there's a second to my motion?
Oh, uh, I'll second that.
Thanks.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Uh, any additional conversation? Questions or penetrating insights?
We bribe them? Can we tell them, like, we'll approve this if they will get rid of the ugly old buildings?
That'll be a side conversation and perhaps not under.
Is that legal? Can we do that?
Those are two very different questions.
Uh, you know, funnily, if this, we're not an A and R where we don't have any discretion and they were asking for an amendment, we could bargain for that, but not under these circumstances.
Darn.
Motion and a second on the table. Is there any other discussion to this? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask you to vote to approve this as, uh, approval not required under the subdivision control and the overlay district that's down there on this parcel of property. So I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. So we have, uh, Form A. We have the Mylar.
Uh, Tim has the Mylar, is that right, Tim?
Uh, do I?
I think Chris.
Tim's got COVID brain. We, we have to give him a little bit of.
Chris or Matt dropped it off.
That's right. Did it, that got dropped off by?
By my brother, my brother Matt dropped it, dropped it off at Tim's.
Yeah, okay. I recall now. I, I thought, what, what is this? But that's right.
Yep.
I could, I could pick it up from Tim because I just got over COVID about a week and a half ago, so my immunities are very strong.
Okay. So it's got to get on the Planning Board Express and ferried around town, so.
Yep.
Signatures, so if you are willing to do that, then.
Yeah, I mean, I can, yes, I can do that.
What's that, Jay?
We only need three signatures, right?
Correct.
So just pick the easiest ones to get.
Yep. No, I'll, I'll, I'll pick it up from Tim, from Tim in the next, uh, probably tomorrow, um, and sign it, and then I'll put an email out to people and say, are you around? So that'll be there tomorrow afternoon or, uh, Thursday morning, okay?
I'm around. I'm working down at, um, 12 Linden right near you, so.
Oh, cool. Okay, then, then I'll just drop a text to you, Jay, and, um, and run down, okay? It'll be either tomorrow afternoon or Thursday morning, all right?
Right, and then I think the best place, the best, next step is to drop it off with Dee because she works full-time and it would be easy for Matt to come by and pick it up.
Sorry, Dee?
Yeah.
Uh, she's the new, um, she's the new Mary.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I knew there was a new one. I didn't know her name.
Yeah, I, I, and I don't actually know her official title, so.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, I can, I can do that. Like, you know, she's there full-time. I can do it, uh, after running it to Jay to get him to sign, and then it's done and dusted.
Okay, and then we need to figure out the fee, Jay.
Yeah, so, um, we said we get the fee whether it's a building lot or not. I guess they are building lots.
Creating a lot.
Making one into two, so there's one new one, is that right?
Yeah, there are three.
No, two, two new ones.
But there's three lots that are affected.
Yes, it's going from one to three.
So I think we're 150 plus 100 per additional lot, is that right? So that would make it 350. Okay. Um, yeah, Chris and Matt, if you, um, usually the, the check ends up going to Eloise, but I'm sure if Eloise is not there because she's only there a few hours a week, um, Dee would probably give it to her.
You're just gonna make it out to the Town of Berlin and then we'll give it to the, we'll get it to the right protocol.
Yeah.
Sure, I can mail out a check tomorrow to the Town Hall.
Awesome.
Yeah.
It's, it's a total of $350?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Excellent. And we have, uh, two paper copies too, besides the Mylar.
What's that? Sorry?
We have two paper copies besides the Mylar?
You do, you do. That, that was dropped off, um, at Tim's with the Mylar and the Form A.
Perfect, okay.
Right, so, Thomas, those need to get either, well, they need to end up in the drawers. If you leave them with me, I'll put it there because I know how to fold a D-size drawing, or you could do it and put it in the storage room.
Correct.
Where the FedEx box was found last week.
Oh, near to it, yep. Okay, excellent.
All right.
Everybody knows.
Thank you very much. Tim, I hope you feel better.
Yeah, I do. Thank you.
Okay, good, good. All right, thanks so much.
All right.
Good night.
Night, Chris.
Okay, uh, we're on schedule. So before we go to the update, um, or any discussions on the, um, ADUs, we have been requested to set aside, um, some time on either one of our meetings in October for an update on, uh, zoning diagnostics. And we have been requested to invite the select board, uh, to hear it as well. So a couple of things that we need to discuss is, one, just do we put it out there and ask them to come to either one of our meetings? Or is this a joint meeting that we want to have, or how do we want to robot handling this?
We're not, neither board is taking any action on this. It's just to hear a presentation, right?
I believe it's a presentation from, uh, Central Mass on, uh, where they are with the, with the diagnostics to date.
Then I think we can invite them to one of our meetings because they don't have to have a joint meeting because nobody's actually taking any action. We're just listening to a presentation.
Okay. So that solves that. So our, uh, the task is, do you want to flip a coin or do we have a preference on which meeting we would like them to come to or?
Do we know that someone from Central Mass Regional Planning can come to either?
Either one, she said.
And just get it over with.
Is, is one of the meetings the 15th?
No, the 8th and the 22nd.
Okay, great. Oh, okay. The 22nd, I will not be able to make it because, uh, we have our department's annual, uh, budget planning in New York, so I could make the first, but not the second. And I, you know, I'm not necessarily, you know, it, it's okay if I miss it. I can catch up with other people, so.
Well, I mean, it would be nice to have you here if you want to.
Yeah, I, I mean, happy to do it on the 8th. I just can't do it on the 22nd.
Understandable. How's everybody else feel about the 8th?
Good.
What's that, Tim?
Good, good.
Okay, good. Jay's good?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, so we'll set it for the 8th. I'll, uh, I'll let the, um, um, everybody know. I'll let Central Mass know and I'll let this, um, the, the requests came from Kristen, so I'll let, uh, Kristen know that we've selected the 8th as the meeting. Eight o'clock? Does that sound good?
Yeah. That's fine to me.
Okay. Alrighty, we can delve into any updates on the, uh, ADU? Or anything we want to chat about, about that? Mandate?
Well. I'll, I'll kick off, I, I said I would sort of take the lead on this, I think we also. Thought at the end of our discussion in the last meeting. That we don't actually have to have something. Imminently, and I was on vacation last week, so I haven't done any.
Okay. So you want to table that for a future?
Yeah, no, and I think, uh, yeah, between now and the next meeting, I, um. Yeah, I can, uh. Sort of do maybe a preliminary report and a map of. How we need to respond to it, okay?
Okay.
Or timeline, whatever, yeah.
Now, did anybody attend the, um, Monday, the. Webinar, oh, wait, that wasn't you, that wasn't you guys, Boston Business Journal had a webinar. On real estate, but where's the one on ADUs? Did that go already go by?
Central Mass had one on ADUs and.
Oh, on the tenth of September.
They invited, um, a rep from Chappa and. Somewhere else, um, and I know. Um, there was a meeting earlier in the day. Another organization held. I think. The suggestion was made that that one might have been more informative by the staff that was there to, to present. The, the one that. Central Mass held, Lynn was there, she's in the audience tonight, I was there.
She was in the audience.
Oh, she's gone?
Has since departed, yes.
Well, um. And. The, the discussion was helpful in that. I, they really made it clear that, of course, this doesn't take effect for six months, so. We're probably six weeks into that cycle, so it's not imminent, um. Some good questions were asked. In regard to. That. For towns that don't have water and sewage. That are dependent on private septic and all. Um, it's, you know, it's clear that, that. The capacity of the existing systems is going to have to. Um, support whatever number of units, bedroom units are on the property, and if it's already maxed out, then some other arrangement has to be made now. The question keeps coming up about people putting. De restrictions on their. Existing dwellings saying that the fourth bedroom in the house won't be utilized as a bedroom as, and as a result, they're allowed to add the ADU with its fourth bedroom and. Um, that's a precarious issue which, you know, I, the, the state's going to have to try to clear that up. Um, I, you know, towns won't be able to tolerate a situation in which you can't enforce. Um, us, uh, you know, an option like that to be built into the program.
Yeah. Uh, that's. Gosh. It's.
Go ahead.
It seems to me that the solution to that is rather simple, that the state simply says that. Bedrooms in the ADU count, um, whatever bedrooms were approved. Uh, it.
Right, yeah.
Anyway, yeah.
And that's, that's clearly what's, I think, going to happen, but the people have been. Trying to put legally, um, legal language into their deeds evidently, that suggests that the fourth bedroom in their home. Is no longer a bedroom and as.
Oh, okay, so that's an existing. Room, okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
I guess people have been playing that game.
Gotcha.
Situations. Where towns might allow. Accessory dwelling units already, um.
Gotcha.
And that question came up a couple times. But anyway, uh, the, the folks said, you know, the state's going to be pursuing this mass, you know. Whatever the. Organis- this, the State Department that deals with housing, housing and community development or whatever.
Yeah.
But they'll, they'll be trying to give guidance to communities over the course of the next few months and. Um, Jane's comment to me was, you know, don't jump at trying to. Add language to your zoning for your special town meeting in the fall. Um, you know, you'll be. You, you should be all right. And. The other problem, of course, with the bylaw is that it, it doesn't, um, provide for. Any requirement that any of these units need to be affordable, so. You know, that.
Yep.
They, they can be built and they, they, they aren't required to be affordable, as a result, you sort of. Add extra units to your, your, you know, your total inventory of housing and, and. Those. Impact the subsidized housing inventory, obviously, and as a result. Towns might very well find themselves in a precarious position. Falling below the ten percent where they thought they might be secure in that position.
But, but Tim, isn't that something that we can add as, as, um, you know, we adopt and massage language for our zoning bylaw?
Yeah, I think. I, we just, we did discuss this at the last meeting, uh, remember when we talked about our. Current bylaw, which allow, you know, which has a condition that says it has to be rented under. Affordable rental unit conditions.
Correct.
And I had said that just looking, and I, this I did do, even though I was on vacation, I did look. At it, and it, it seemed to me that when you matched up. The stuff that had to be, you know, the things that had to be in right. That adding that additional condition. Uh, didn't actually sort of head to head. Um. Contradict any of the, uh, any of the things, now I think we need to. Look more deeply into that, and Tim, I'd be very interested if there was any discussion. On that at the, the meeting, but it, you know, certainly as a threshold review, it seemed to me. As though that didn't actually contradict what was required, um. Because you could still do it by right, you just had an additional. Condition.
Yeah, and that would be the hope certainly, and, and. I think what will happen is that we'll get a little more guidance from the state. Um, some of these questions that we have that clearly haven't been answered yet, we can formulate a little more clearly. Um, I think I'd be inclined to start with the commission and ask them, particularly Jane, when she meets with us, because.
Yeah.
Um, it. With, with the zoning diagnostic, I think she'll identify some of the areas in which we're deficient and. It would give us an opportunity to say, you know, and by the way. You know, if we're able to pull in this EEA grant, um, which in my conversation with her recently, it sounds like. We might not hear on that for another six weeks or so, they, they changed the deadline for submissions and as a result, they're probably going to extend the time they take to. Review those. But, um. If we were to succeed with that, then obviously the ADU issue would be folded into the. Rewrite of the zoning bylaw and we get some good, strong support from a variety of sources, so, you know, I. I think we're in a good position.
Well, may I suggest then that when Tom. Talks to them about the eighth. That we say that we'd like to address this issue and Tom, I can send you some language for that tomorrow. You know, basically, just not a whole lot of language, just, you know, three or four sentences to say. When we're talking about this, you know, a, a really topical. Point would be this and we'd appreciate it if. You could be prepared to address it, okay?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah, my question about. An affordable requirement, so does that then put ADUs into some sort of lottery?
Well. Um. You, you know, I think. I'm not sure that's all that. All that clear, you know, we, we. When we wrote. The bylaw change to allow accessories, um, for. Uh, caregivers, family or rental, if it was rented in accordance with, you know. Qualifying as a unit. I, I'm not sure, certainly, and I wrote the language, I didn't, you know, think it all the way to the grand, um. And things have developed a lot since then. I, I think the answer to that is yes. Um, it doesn't mean, because you know, we're not like desperate, we aren't desperate for. Uh, affordable units that we could conceivably. Write a bylaw that didn't say qualified as affordable units. But were rented at. The level that would make them affordable with all that, the rest of that administrative. Claptrap, I mean, yeah, and I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that. We have that flexibility when we put it together and then we're perhaps. Because the problem with the, the old, uh, I, I really think the problem with the old bylaw is. Nobody wanted to do an accessory apartment, then put it out for a lottery, you know, so. If we, if we looked at backing that off a bit, we might. Materially affect. Affordable housing, even, even if we didn't get credit for it. And again, I'm not asserting that, I'm just saying that's a possibility.
Yeah, no, it's just some, just things to think about, um. Yeah, because I'm, I'm all for trying to find a way to make. ADUs not. Skew our percentage. For forty B. Um, I think that's something important that we have to keep in mind, but at the same time requiring if. If we wrote it in a way that it required the ADU to become part of a lottery system. I don't think that that would be. Beneficial for the townspeople either.
No, no, and, and I'm not sure.
Figure out how to make that work.
I, I'm not sure because I haven't researched it, this is an acceler- accessory dwelling unit. Which is part of an existing residential unit, I'm not sure how forty B counts that, whether they count it. Still as one residential unit that has an accessory use, uh, but, and, and again, I just, I just don't know.
Yeah. All, all good things for us to have answers to, though.
I'll, 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 I'll put that in the language that, uh. I'm going to send to, to Tom as a subsidiary question on this, okay?
Great.
Did, I didn't realize that our current ADU. Um, bylaw allowed you to. Um, build and have an affordable.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you go through all of the administrative processes and rent it, obviously at that level. The current bylaw does allow that, it's just that I think because of the administrative steps, probably more than the. Rental income level. Uh, people just have not taken that up, Jay.
So is it, has anyone taken advantage of it?
I don't know, nobody, uh, it's been out there for a long time, but, and again, I don't think. Given. And I guess, you know, since covid, I, I haven't kept up with rentals, but certainly before covid. I don't think that, um, given the. Rentals. Rates. In the town for. Sort of non-standard apartments, you know, uh. Previous uses, that sort of thing. I don't think that it was the, uh, the, the rental income level that was stopping people, it was the administrative stuff.
Right.
Uh, that's only my gut feeling about it.
Well, has anyone built? Any units in town that have, uh, rent control like that?
No.
At all, I mean, without being required to because they're building.
Uh, well, well, again, if it's an affordable rental unit, it has that effective rental control there, you know, there is stuff down at River Bridge.
No, I'm saying voluntary, so.
No.
Have any units been built of any kind in the town that have that, you know, rent control basically on them?
No, not.
Early as opposed to.
Others can speak up, but I don't, no, I don't think so at all, but this would, this would effectively create. You know, uh, uh, and you're, you're quite right to characterize it that way, would create a, you know, rent, even if we backed off from the administrative steps, it would create. Rent controlled units, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, it might be a tough sell for people that are considering. Building ADUs.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, as we got into this, we certainly want to look at what. Those monthly rental levels were and what the escalators were and, and so on, to, and, you know, to understand. Whether it would be, um, okay, or whether it would be unpalatable, I agree.
By the way, I learned yesterday on, on the, uh, topic of the septic's. Capacity. In New Hampshire, things are very different, so we have Title V. And you have to, your system has to comply at least with certain, you know, modern regulations for you to sell your house. In New Hampshire. There's a twenty year old threshold that they look at. And then. You need to have, when, if you have a non-compliant. Septic system, you don't need. To modernize it, you need to get an official plan. For a new system, but you don't have to install it.
Interesting.
They fail so rea- I think they fail almost never. You know, like even the old, I had, I had a. Six foot diameter, six foot deep stone, fieldstone cesspool that we lived in for seventeen years with a full fa- family of five. I don't think we ever fail. Um, except in unusual circumstances, so that, so. I was kind of surprised that. You aren't required to upgrade the system in New Hampshire, all you have to do is. Show that someone, if it does fail.
Can, can hear it, yeah, interesting.
Yeah.
Well, take that to the State House, Jay.
Well, I mean, from an economic perspective, it makes a lot of sense.
Sure.
Unless you're, unless you're a septic installer.
I don't know, forty thousand dollars or something, putting in a system that we didn't even need, but.
No, I, yeah. I agree, but like I said, take it to the State House, um.
Yeah. Well, but like you're saying, there may need to be some. Changes. In the code. For, um.
Yeah, that would be Title V changes, yeah.
Turn if, to make the ADU thing work.
It's a good idea, you know, that, uh. If you take it to the State House, you say, in this context. You know, you, you would allow deferred, um. Upgrade.
Yeah, so if you've got an existing house that's with a system that's matched to the house. And you added an ADU. And you had a plan to be able to upgrade the system if it was necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm, so you're saying. You're saying build the system. I, I mean, build the property. Let's say it's a four bedroom septic, you build an ADU. But all you do is have a plan for a five bedroom?
Yeah. So if it fails, it can be repaired.
Interesting.
On the property, so there's enough space, you know, there's place to put another. You know, a larger system.
Interesting. Yeah, well.
Think, you know, I, I. From, from the rates that I saw, that the rates of utilization of the new ADU law in California and New Hampshire. It was less than a tenth of a percent or something, it was very, very low, it was, so in California. It was going to save the housing gr- you know, the. Solve the housing crisis in California, and I think it was just a unnoticed blip. Right?
You know, I, I agree.
I don't know what kind of. You know, incentives or, or, uh, impediments. Were in place that caused, maybe encouraged that to happen, but I, my. I suspect that. In Massachusetts, all the cities and towns are going to have to make it. Fairly attractive for people to. To build ADUs in order to.
No, I think that's, I think that, that's right, because. You know, it's, um. It's, if, it's, if you will, a sort of intimate, uh, you know, almost like, uh. Condos or townhouse, uh. Development, and if you have. Administrative steps that make it difficult for people to control the things they might be concerned with. I think that's, that was the problem with our local bylaw. People just didn't want to, uh, to do that and subject. Something so closely associated with their own main dwelling to that level of administration, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and, and there's economics too, it's, it's not a slam dunk economically.
Right.
You know, to build something like that and, and whatever you need to do to build it. And be able to rent it. So that it's worth. You know.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And, and so that it's worth having a stranger in your backyard.
Yeah, and, and that's why I say, you know, we should, uh, get a, a hold of the figures. If we were to do this affordable. if we were to do this affordable and look at what it is. There are all kinds of possibilities. It could be affordable plus, if we were taking simply the route of trying to materially affect the housing crisis, and if these didn't count as units for purposes of forty B, uh, you know, we, we, you know, we could write a bylaw that said, uh, affordable plus ten percent if that was if that was the break-even point, because these are some of the things we can think about, yeah. But I think the threshold before we spend too much time talking about possibilities is to get those couple of questions out on the, um, October eighth, zoning diagnostics, and then take it from there, because at that point, we're not gonna be, you know, hopefully, we're not gonna be dealing purely in alternate realities that will have some, uh, you know, some idea of what we're operating in.
Agreed.
So have we beat AUD to death? I didn't say have we, you know, have we beaten a dead horse because of Jay and his sensibility, so.
I don't mind you beating dead horses. If you beat live horses, it's not good.
Yeah, no, I get it. Yeah.
Now that everybody has a camera in their cellphone, there are people who are competing at very high levels in the international world, where someone will show up with a video of them, you know, smacking their horse around.
Yeah, no, I'm, I've, I've seen a couple of articles on that, yeah.
So you have to be very careful, no matter how angry or how bad your horse is. Watch what you do.
Yep.
Yep.
Wow.
Always someone watching.
Yep.
Well, we have time for timely items. Do we have any timely items?
We are at the timely item stage.
I have a, I have a timely item. Um, I just sent you, I believe I just sent you an email I got from Kristen yesterday. And that perhaps included a response that I sent back to her, but, she said, we learned the mall is going up for sale, which of course we've been talking about, um, and that Macy's is closing. We really need to move on zoning modifications to align ourselves with Marlboro for the uses that make sense for Berlin, or we risk not attracting quality developers. We should hear about the one-stop grant for zoning this month or next month, which, um, that's the EEA grant. I sent her a note saying, I think Jane expects a response maybe in late October, early November, so it wouldn't be that quick. But she was hoping we can have some zoning articles ready for the May town meeting in response to this situation at the mall. The select board is reviewing the Marlboro zoning changes as listed in the Donald Lynch Boulevard Vision Plan. We've been of course, looking at that plan for a couple of years now. We first got access to it back in July of, of twenty-two. Um, and that has that schedule of uses. And that's what they're gonna be looking at, um, and she's saying that the select board would like to schedule a meeting with the planning board in the near future, once the board has discussed that chart. Would it be possible to have the planning board do the same, attached to the spreadsheet we are using? This will be discussed uh, at their meeting next Monday, and if anyone from the planning board would like to attend. I wrote back to her and said, um, first that I didn't think we'd hear about the zoning diagnostic until later in October or November. I suggested that if we did get the, the grant, um, it probably wouldn't, the money wouldn't be available to us probably until the first of the year. But since we've put up a match of our own money, we could begin to expend some of that, um, sooner than that January first access to the full amount of the funds, um, in which case we could begin to get Central Mass to help us in the zoning rewrite with some focus on some of this language pertaining to the overlay. And then I, I said that there are a couple, I mean, obviously, we've been working on this for quite some time, and they've had two different consultants that have come in and worked for this, for the mall folks that have been dismissed that we, you know.
Sorry, who is they? Tim, who is they?
Pardon?
Who is they in that sentence?
Solomon Pon, the.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, Solomon Pon's hired two different consulting firms to work with them over the last couple of years, and we've met with them, um, over at the mall, and Matt Bader participated in some discussions with us and stuff, but they've all been dismissed. Um, so I said, it's, it's not as though we haven't been trying, um, we're continually to be interested. I said that the red flag items that you look at on the list of uses that are allowed in Marlboro that they've suggested we accept, um, would be the drive-through restaurants, trailer parks, manufacturing or warehousing. I think the warehousing component is, is a red flag, given what we've seen Amazon do. And then the multifamily dwelling projects of any significant size. I think people have been pretty clear that when the mall folks suggested three or four hundred housing units might be in their plan, um, it, it certainly wouldn't be something that would be digested in Berlin at all, as far as I could see.
Yep. I think so. Well, I think the first is premature. I thi- is that what you told them, Tim?
I think it's premature for, for us to go too deep too quick on this. And, and I said that perhaps we should brainstorm a bit before this gets too far into the the public arena. The planning board meets tomorrow night, and I said I, you know, we toss it around. Might be best.
Sorry, the planning board in Marlboro?
No, the planning board here, we're meeting.
Oh, sorry, sorry. You're talking about a conversation you had yesterday. I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, and, and I said it, it might be best to hold off on a planning board member meeting with the select board until we get further along. And I, you know, I, I, I think we need to be cautious about, what gets said too quickly at a select board meeting, I think. Um, yeah, the planning board needs some time to work on this a little more closely. The other part of the problem is that it, it's simp- it isn't simply the use chart that's being affected. We really need to look at the nature of the overlay in its entirety. Marlboro, the way I look at it, has basically said all the uses that are on that use chart are allowed in the overlay district that's on the Marlboro side of the line.
That's right.
And I, I don't, I don't think Berlin can just automatically, I don't think people can assume that we're automatically gonna buy into that notion. And I think there's also, there were also proposals in the Metropolitan Air Planning Commission's report that changed a lot of the lot size dynamics. And we've got permissible building areas, permissible parking areas, uh, you know, if, if Sears.
It's a tremendous mismatch.
Yeah, I mean, so it, it isn't simply looking at the use chart and saying, oh, we'd allow those uses and we'll put that on a town meeting warrant. And that'll be everything that's hunky-dory. Um, we really need to look at lot size and who's, you know, if, if Sears is, if Sears owns their lot and Penny's owns their lot and those bleed, well, Sears entirely in Berlin and Penny's bleeds into Berlin a little bit. And, and they're not owned by the same entity that buys the mall, for instance, um, there's a lot of moving parts, so it's, it's a, it's more complex than just looking at the use chart and saying, oh, yeah, that's fine.
Sure, and the assumption that what would be a good fit for Marlboro would be something that we would want to adopt, um, I think certainly is not how we feel about that.
I, I don't think, I don't think that they have taken the approach of looking at what's a good fit for them. They've just thrown all the spaghetti at the wall.
Sure, because they're, right, because they'll make anything work, because first of all, it's on the edge of town.
Right.
Um, but, yeah, um, you know, so, but just a, just a kind of blatant or blanket alignment with what Marlboro has done is not, um.
It's a no-go for us.
Is not how we're thinking of it.
No. Nope.
I, I've explained, when I've sat in on meetings over at the mall, um, that you know, we have to go to a town meeting and there could be several hundred people that have to agree that this is the right approach, and not just the city council, which, because Thomas, you went to that city council meeting and obviously, given the fact that they tended to the item on the agenda in, in lightning time before you even got there, it signifies there isn't much pushback from the city council at all, so.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm rather slow because of the operations I've had over the last week, but I realized I couldn't get in the front door. And in the time that it took me to walk around the building and find my way through the construction in and up to the third floor, which is unsigned, and I noticed, because I walk with a cane at this point, not handicapped accessible, because it's up a flight of stairs in the corner after you get out of the elevator. They've done it. It was done.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm happy to tell Kristen that probably no one would, from the planning board would attend this meeting, but we'd be more than happy to talk to the select board at one of our meetings, maybe in November or something.
I think that's good. I, I.
When they come to the meeting on the eighth, do we want to address that at that point with them?
Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll tell Kristen that, un- unless somebody really feels they wanna go on Monday, the thirtieth, um, you know, I'm happy to tell Kristen that we, we'd rather wait, we'll talk about it briefly on the eighth, and we'll set up a time in November to talk about it more fully after we've had a chance to think about it some more.
That sounds great to me.
Yep. Although they are, they do meet in hybrid sessions now. So if somebody wanted to attend, you could do so from the comfort of your own home.
Yeah, I said, I'm not sure.
On that particular date, I'm driving to Logan's.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I, I don't think we have, I don't think any of us would feel comfortable trying to explain where we are as a, as a group.
Sure.
Um, and I don't see, I mean, the problem with those meetings is that you begin to, to ramble about, you know, possibilities and suddenly, you know.
Suddenly, it's fact.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah. Suddenly, the planning board is doing X.
Right, I think we've made it.
Yeah, we're endorsing the, uh, the program or the chart.
Yeah, I, and I think, I mean, anybody that listens to, anybody that would listen to this tape would understand that we're not ready to sign, seal, and deliver, um.
Indeed.
Yeah, so.
All right.
I saw a correspondence among the planning board members about malls, um, using casinos as a way to survive.
Yeah.
Correspondence is, is a bit generous. I saw one member kind of advocating, maybe. Oh, can you imagine? Can you imagine if we did think that that was a good idea?
Think of the tax revenue. Where's the Berlin Economic Committee that should be?
Yeah. The house never loses, as they say, right?
Question.
No, you know what still, still to me feels like is a loose end is, you remember the second of the consultants that came to visit us? We asked them about, uh, athletic, you know, activities.
Yep.
Because a lot of malls are getting converted now to that.
Yep.
And the guy said, oh, yeah, well, we don't do that.
Yep. Yeah, well, that was a consultant, but I, I agree. I think that is still one of the things, and I, 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 I think we need to facilitate some conversation with Marlboro to say, can we bend this in ways that, you know, where we're not just opening the doors to anybody who comes in, but where we're encouraging certain activities? Um, because I, I really do think, um, that given that we have three large plots, that if you have athletic arrangements in there that, that bring people in, they would support food court, they would support, you know, retail, because, you know, I think all of us who, you know, who are parents have experienced, you know, like hanging out all day for a series of meets or events, and, uh, so I think, I think we need to have a conversation with Marlboro about that, because I, I don't think we wanna open the, the gates to every bottom fishing use that, uh, that might come in there.
I agree.
Well, the, we already have a precedent of having a pretty successful hockey.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's it.
But, right, but we wanna build off of that.
Yes, and.
Saying.
Yeah, and our, but, you know, there are geographic centrality in New England, in New England.
Right.
And the connections with the interstates to that seems to me to be a tremendous high card to play in this, and, um, so I really do think we need to reach out to Marlboro and yeah, send a couple of people over to say.
Yeah, just.
Can we think about this, guys?
Yeah, look at Boundless Adventures. When they came to us, I was like, you wanna do what? Where? And they are so successful and continue to have more success every year.
Yep.
Um, it, in, and that just shows the, the, um, level of interest in that kind of entertainment around here.
Yep, and I think the other thing is, it's like zone it and they will come, not build it and they will come. Then if you create zoning in an area that is otherwise commercially favorable, that encourages a particular thing, then you're gonna self-sort the people who approach you. And, and you're gonna get, you're gonna get presentations that are consistent with that. So, yeah, I, and Tim, maybe you and I can talk. I'd, I'd love to, uh, I'd love to have, you know, maybe a small, high-level discussion with a couple of pla- you know, a couple of representatives from our planning board, maybe somebody from the selectmen, and a couple of people, you know, maybe the mayor, or a couple of people from the city council and their planning board, and maybe have this kind of discussion sometime in the next month.
Yeah, no, I think that'd be good.
And you have better contacts there than I am, but I, than I have, but I'd be happy to participate.
Well, let me, let me see what I can push around, because, um, Meredith Harris, their economic development manager is um, someone that I think we need to have some conversation with that might be instrumental in, in having this thing kind of gel. Um, so it may be a, a simple conversation initially with, with just her to try to understand what the playing field looks like over there and who the players are, and then do a broader session, you know, as a follow-up to that.
So let me. No, that, that's perfect. I mean, if, if, if you're willing to make the contacts, I'm willing to sort of organize a presentation and you know, present it to the board, basically along the lines that we've just been discussing.
Yeah, no, it sounds good. I'll, I'll reach out to her.
So the mall, you said the mall is for sale. Does that not include Sears? And Macy's or what? And Macy's or what?
Uh, probably effectively yes, but it requires multiple parties to the transaction, Jay. But it would require multiple parties because of the fact that there's multiple ownerships. Within that. But I, I, I would just.
Sears property could sell that independently of whatever else is going on.
You could, you could. Yeah.
So if we, if we provide zoning. Incentives for some type of athletic thing. Someone could buy the Sears property or the mall property or.
It's. I think ideally it would be good, you know, because the two. The two parcels, if you will, you know, the Marlboro parcel and the Berlin parcel. Are quite interdependent and, you know, access to the highway and so on. It would be ideal if they were at least reasonably coordinated, but you're right, we could sit, we could do it. On our own with respect to aspects of the mall, yep. Even aspects of the mall that are owned by the mall that are within Berlin.
But, you know, I, that's where I began to talk about this issue of permissible building, permissible parking, permissible, you know. There, there, there may be required modifications to a number of those, the height is an issue. Lot size, frontage.
Oh, yeah.
You know, this.
I don't think, I don't think the word is may, I think the word is will, Tim, you know, it absolutely will.
Yeah, and, and so. That's where I, there's no simple solution and, and like Thomas is saying, it gets complex because those three anchors do own their pads. And it appears as though all three will disappear. You know, I think Penny's is only on life support too, so. You know.
And, and the level, the level of complexity about it. Just makes me think that Marlboro would at least want to come to the table and hear what we have to say.
Right.
Because if it becomes more complex because of the differences in the two towns.
Right.
That complicates the whole thing.
No, no, and that's the kind of presentation, you know, that I'm offering to put together, absolutely.
Absolutely, I would go along that line in that, look. You want something to come in here, you don't want us to make trouble, work with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's more the case that, you know, is this? You know, is this thing going to be a Frankenstein, you know, monster with? You know, part of the body under Berlin zoning by law and part under theirs. And open to any kind of commercial development, or do we want to spend a little time structuring this? Yeah, again, as I say, to zone it so that. They will come and that they will be. Desirable and, you know, for the next couple of decades at least. You know, predictable, commercial successes, you know?
Yeah.
And I think the other thing is to, and I will put this in the presentation. Is, you know, to, to, to look at this as three pads, you know, with, with. Three possibilities, and if those pads are activities that support. Uh, you know, a diverse sort of food. Come, you know, retail, et cetera. It, you know, is it a way to really optimize what we have there?
Right?
All right, so I'll, I'll reach out to Meredith and see if we can get some dialogue going.
And I will, over the next week or so. Take a, a crack at maybe sort of a PowerPoint presentation on the points that we've discussed tonight. And people can look at that, okay?
Great.
Awesome.
All right.
I have another.
Okay, any other topical issues?
I haven't, yeah, I think, did I send everybody this cottage housing unveiled workshop? Notice, maybe if I didn't, I'll send it now.
Yeah, why don't you resend it, because I, I mean, I, I might have. Got it over last week, but I was trying to avoid emails in some respect.
A, a virtual meeting on October 7th at 3:30. With. An engineer named Susan Carter, Mark O'Hagan, the developer and Dan. Forty are the retired town planner. Address key concerns like NIMBY opposition, water and sewer issues and share real world strategies that helped overcome these hurdles for cottage housing. Whether you're a developer, planner or housing advocate, this is your opportunity to get answers, so. I'll send this out to everybody, but. If there's an opportunity here to register for that, that'll be October 6th, 7th at 3:30. Lessons from a town planner, a developer and an engineer, and that was one of the things that we made clear to Central Mass was, you know. Get us somebody that has had experience with these and tried to overcome the. Septic and surge and water issues in particular, so I think that's what they're trying to do with this.
Are you going to be able to attend?
I am going to be able to attend. It's virtual, yeah, so.
Yeah. I'll have to take a look at my work schedule.
Okay, so I'll go with you, Tim.
Yeah. And you can deliver in the A and R plan while you're doing that, right?
I, I would love to hear your. If I may be so bold, report about the meeting because, you know, work. So I won't be able to attend.
So Tom Sanford, are you Tom Sanford 425 or are you Tom Sanford Sanford Contracting? What, what?
Either one, whatever you wish.
I, I sent it to both of them, that's what I've been doing. And I've sent it to planning board and Tom.
You already, you already sent it to us and I just finished registering.
Oh, did you?
Look at you.
I did, I didn't, I didn't fail to send it. But I'll send it again so everybody will have it in there.
Did send it.
Good, all right, there it goes.
Bye.
Carolyn, if you want to skip out and work, we'll pick you up on the way.
Yeah.
Excellent.
3:30, hell, you're not doing anything by that time of the day anyway, what?
Well, sure, but I have to still pretend, I, I am though attending the Wheeler Pond one.
Oh, when is that? I haven't heard about that one. How did I get left off of that list?
That was at 2 o'clock today. Apparently I'm not. Oh, and I swore on the recording, oh, I'm sorry.
Was a meeting today about Wheeler Pond?
Yes.
Who did that go to?
I thought all of the same people who attended the last one. I'm gonna have to find out what happened and why there wasn't, there's usually a reminder about those kind of things, I wonder if. Something happened and it didn't happen. I, I intended on attending it and told my boss that I was going to.
Went to was.
Let me see. Let me see if I can find it.
You dreamt it.
Well, I dreamt then, and I actually put it in my calendar, so. Would have sent that, I bet the interflue lady. Sarah Wind. I did dream it. Oh, you know what, it might have been the conservation email. That might have gone there. Anyway, I'll try and find it, Tim, and. Find out what happened about that.
Yeah, let me know, because I'm a. I've been chatting with different people and. Butters, you know, trying to get some sense as to a willingness to. You know, what would happen if, for instance, the. Evidently, the land under the mill pond is not owned by anyone, which is an odd circumstance and. What they explained to us was that in a situation where a pond ceases to exist. The land often ends up. Reverting to a butter's. But in this instance where. There's the potential for. Conservation and recreation and. Interest on the part of the landowner to. Negotiate with the town about. Some sort of access. Or whatever. It would. It would be beneficial if some of the other individuals that abut it. Were of a similar disposition. Yeah, so.
Right.
Okay. So I. Well, if I may, if I may make a lawyerly point that. That land was probably first conveyed before the revolution and under English law. They have a concept called inborn of a county, which means that land which isn't claimed by anybody else. Diverts to the king or the queen so that.
So Carolyn gets.
Maybe we could write to Charles III and ask him about this.
Uh, that's great. Uh, the things you learn at planning board, right, you know?
Right?
There you go.
So. Yeah, I'd be interested in continuing to participate in the discussions because I've been talking to a butters about. Access, so.
Yeah.
That's all I think I have.
All right.
Excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're, we're at 8:59, man.
Nice job, Tom.
So I found the email. It went to. Ryan Kerr Carrigan at mass.gov. The Highway Department. June Miller. So it went to, but it, it went to like. You know, 900 people. One of those ones. But it looks like that's all that attended. Or accepted the invitation.
So June may have gone.
June may have gone or Fred may have gone.
I'll ask June what she learned if, when I see her.
And I will respond to, I'm gonna email Sarah right now and. You know, say, oops.
If you can send me that email too, that would be good, I'd like to see who's on it.
Yeah. Send it right now.
Thanks. Do you want a motion, sir?
Sure.
I move, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
A motion in a second and it's non debatable, so I'll ask you to vote. Close the meeting or adjourn the meeting. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimously.